Call the Acton Town, uh, Town of Acton Planning Board meeting to, uh, order. Uh, we have everybody. I'm not going to do approval minutes. All right. Uh, before we begin the public hearing, I'd like to set some guidelines for this evening. First, anyone that's interested, mask are available at both entrances. Secondly, we'd like to thank every, we'd like everyone to know that although referenced as a public hearing, this is actually not a public hearing in the legal sense. It's more of a public comment session. The adoption of a moratorium does not require a formal public hearing when voted on it, at a open town meeting. However, the planning board felt it was important to hear the voices of Acton property owners. The purpose, purpose of tonight's public hearing is to listen to the public comment on, on the proposed moratorium. After the CEO has read the draft language, we will open up the public comment by having the town administrator read comments received by the town electronically. At the conclusion of those comments, any person wishing to speak can come up to the podium, state their name, and have a maximum of three minutes to share their thoughts and concerns. The planning board will not engage in back and forth discussions with anyone at the podium. In effort to allow everyone to speak, the recording secretary will maintain a list of questions throughout the hearing at the conclusion of the public comment. We will do our best to answer as many questions as possible. Lastly, we ask that everyone present speaks respectfully to one another and treats every, each other kindly, and any other behavior will not be tolerated by the chair. At this time, I'll turn it over to our CEO who will read the proposed moratorium.
So the proposed moratorium states as, "The Town of Acton, Maine adopts a moratorium ordinance on mineral extraction as follows." If you want to also, if you want to read, follow along up there too. "Whereas the Town of Acton, uh, Town of Acton are experiencing increased development of mineral extraction pits in close proximity to each other other than, other and to water bodies, and whereas continued development of mineral extraction pits pursuant to the current zoning and land use ordinances could pose serious threats to the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Acton, including but not limited to increased volume of large commercial vehicles on local roads with attendant, attendant concerns regarding pedestrian and vehi- vehicular safety, deterioration of roads, infrastructure, and increased maintenance expenses, impact of additional and/or expanded mineral extraction pits in areas proximate to water bodies on water quality, impact of additional and/or expanded mineral extraction pits on air and soil quality, quality as the result of particulate, particulate pollution and erosion, noise pollution, loss of open space and wildlife habitat. Whereas the town's current zoning and land ordinances lack uniform standards for mineral extraction pits sufficient to allow for mitigation of these threats to public health, safety, and welfare identified above, and whereas the town will need at least 180 days to, to, to develop and implement the necessary amendments to its zoning and land use ordinances to mitigate these threats, and whereas in judgment of, of the town, these facts create an emergency within the meaning of the title 30A MRS A 35, uh, 43561B, requiring an immediate moratorium on any new or expanded mineral extraction pits for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare. Now therefore, the Town of Acton hereby enacts a moratorium effectively, effective immediately and applicable to the maximum extent permitted by law and subject to the severability clause below. To all proceedings, applications, and petitions not pending with this, within the meaning of Title 1 MRS A 302, as proceedings, applicants, and petitions not pending, oops, sorry, um, as of the date, whenever the date is from the, if it's voted on at the special town meeting, seeking permits for approval of any new mineral extraction pit or the expansion of any existing mineral extraction pits, the moratorium established hereby shall continue for a period of 180 days from the date of enactment. No town official, agent, or employee shall accept or approve any applications, plans, permits, licenses, and/or fees relating to any uses governed by the moratorium ordinance during the term of this moratorium ordinance or any extension hereof. To, to the extent, to the extent any provision of this moratorium ordinance is denied, is deemed invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the balance of the moratorium ordinance shall remain valid." This is just the proposed, um, obviously, um, it has to go in front of a, uh, a special town meeting and the residents vote on it. So this is what it looks like. This is our draft, um, and this is how it stands unless changes are made. So. Jennifer?
So the first email came in on January 8th. "To whom it may concern, I am the owner and seasonal resident of property at 57 Chamberlain Road and also a co-trustee for the property at 64 Chamberlain Road. I have learned that there is significant increase in the mining activity at the junction of Kilty, Chamberlain, and Mann Roads. I am very, very concerned with this activity with respect to the proper proximity to my property lines, increased runoff into Great East Lake down Chamberlain Road in the vicinity of the properties which I am associated with, increased noise and deterioration of the roads in which we use to access our properties, in particular Mann Road, which has never been in good shape to begin with since the last expansion of gravel pit around 35 years ago. As a taxpaying resident of Acton since 1995 and a seasonal resident since 1970, I would ask that you forward my strong recommendations to adopt a moratorium on expanded mineral rights for at least 180 days to understand the impacts of expanded mineral extraction. I'm sending this to the clerk, tax collection office because I do not have direct contacts for the planning board. Kindly forward to the appropriate person or persons. Thank you, Steve Chamberlain." January 9th. "To the Planning Board, dear board, I am greatly saddened by the recent clear cutting in the immediate vicinity of Great East Lake, and I strongly support the moratorium on this activity until proper environmental regulations can be enacted. I oppose all clear cutting in the vicinity of the shores of the great ponds and other protected waterways in Acton. Please vote accordingly. Best regards, Walden Matthews." January 9th. "I am writing to oppose the mining and clear cutting that is taking place on the shores of Moose Pond in Acton. As a year-round resident, I want to ensure that our lakes and well water remain pristine. I live on Fulton Road off H Road and am very concerned about the wear and tear that these large trucks will be putting on the roads." Meg Hickley. January 11th. "Dear Planning Board, we are seasonal residents on Great East Lake. We are writing this letter to support the Planning Board's moratorium on issuing new mineral extraction permits, AKA pits. We personally do not oppose the mineral extraction process overall, but we think it's smart to take a moment to make sure the Planning Board has some time to review the existing town ordinances we have in place to ensure that they are sufficiently, they sufficiently protect the public from harm. Here are some of the elements that we have concerns with. Theoretically, some of the concerns could be managed through individual permitting restrictions and conditions that the board currently has control over. However, past practice has shown that this approach results in inconsistencies for different pits in Acton and clear ordinances would provide better standards, guidelines, and would facilitate enforcement. Environmental impact. We are concerned that these projects are being approved without sufficient analysis of overall environmental impact, including water quality at the site, lake impact at the surrounding area, air quality and dust and wildlife habitant. Remedies such as revegetation have not happened in many cases where it was likely required, which also suggests an enforcement issue. Road damage and safety. In the case of both town roads and camp roads, consideration should be made for both road safety and the condition of the roads. Acton roads were not necessarily built to accommodate large and heavy trucks, and we should develop standards to determine how to identify proper routes and possible compensation for road damage to town roads. In the case of camp roads, especially when pits are located along a single access point to other properties, consideration should be made to ensure that other property owners have a proper road, aren't required to drive through an active industrial mine to reach their property, and also to ensure that existing camp roads aren't left in a condition where erosion and heavy traffic makes those roads less passable for passenger vehicles. Financial health of Acton. While we understand that mining operations are important to financial well-being of both mining operations in the town, we think that it's important for us to take a brief period to consider how to ensure these operations are conducted in a manner that doesn't adversely affect Acton's attractiveness to vacationers. Our family enjoys our cottage in Acton because it represents nature and solitude. Driving through an active mining area to reach our property, dealing with truck traffic, and then living with loud noises from nearby machinery disrupts this. Over time, this will make Acton less attractive for vacationers who contribute a large portion of Acton's tax, tax revenue. Not only would I urge the board to adopt a moratorium to review the ordinances, but I also strongly urge you to require existing pits to be reviewed and potentially repermitted under new ordinances. The operation nearest our cabin was last permitted in 1989, and much has changed in the years. Sincerely, Laura and Jared Johnson." Received January 12th. Letter to the Acton Planning Board and Code Officer. "As a member of the Three Rivers Land Trust, I would like to say we have worked with the Peppins before on land conservation. They worked with us for five years on the Hanson Pond project. Three Rivers Land Trust was able to purchase 275 acres, including a mile of frontage on the Little Osprey River and 90% of the shore furniture on Hanson Pond. This is available for recreation and hunting." Thank you, Carl Davis. Another letter addressed to the same. "I am concerned with the proposed gravel extraction moratorium. Previous planning boards have spent a great deal of time and effort in writing gravel extraction ordinances. I would encourage the planning board and CEO to sit down with the selectmen, concerned citizens, and gravel pit owners to come up with a reasonable compromise for all involved. Gravel is a necessary resource for all of us." Thanks, Carl Davis. He wrote that as an individual. January 13th. "Dear Planning Board, I'm in big support of a moratorium in regards to any new gravel pit mining extractions in Acton, Maine. We own property on the third basin of Great East Lake and are very concerned with the proposed development of a new pit or mine along H Road. We are disheartened to see and hear what's happening already in the Mann Road area and the possible environmental impact runoff will have for our pristine lake. Please vote yes on a moratorium at tonight's meeting." Thank you, Laura Milner. January 13th. "To the Acton Planning Board and Selectmen, we have read the proposed moratorium ordinance and mineral extraction pits. We feel strongly that it's in the interest of public health, safety, and the welfare of Acton's taxpayers, and the Town of Acton must adopt this moratorium. It is appalling what we have recent, what has recently been done to the land around the Peppin pit. We are extremely concerned that increased development of mineral extraction pits will potentially have adverse impact to adjacent bodies of water, air, groundwater, and soil quality, the rights of all residents to enjoy peace and quiet, roads that are maintained by the town and those that are not, and overall property values. We implore you to adopt the moratorium and take the time necessary to properly study the impacts of the increased development of mineral extraction pits on the Town of Acton taxpayers." Doug and Sheila Ross. And the last one. Came in today, January 13th. "Dear Planning Board members, on behalf of St. Germain, I would like to take this opportunity to address issues related to the effects of groundwater quality from sand and gravel extraction operations. St. Germain has four state and main licensed geologists on staff and have been working with the industry with, for over two decades. St. Germain has conducted hundreds of groundwater quality monitoring events at sand and gravel pits throughout Maine. Based on the groundwater data that has been collected, no negative environmental impacts to groundwater quality have been identified. Furthermore, many of the sample, many of the sampled facilities legally conduct extraction from below the water table or have a state-approved waiver that does not require a five-foot buffer, buffer above groundwater. This proposed operation would take a conservative route and maintain sand and gravel operations at least five feet above the water table with the performance requirement of the Maine Department of Environmental Protection Site Location and Development Law. Sand and gravel operations do not cause increased sodium and chloride concentrations in the groundwater. If elevated sodium and chloride levels are present, it is likely attributable to the application of salt to the roadways or onsite salt storage. Sand and gravel operations also do not cause increased concentrations in the groundwater. If present, it likely originates from nearby agriculture, timber harvesting, or residential subsurface wastewater disposal systems. Residential disposal systems discharge nitrates to the groundwater and can be located as close as 18 inches above the water table. In summary, St. Germain has not witnessed any sand and gravel operations where an increase in sodium chloride or nitrate concentrations in the groundwater has occurred, and therefore groundwater quality issues do not justify the need to enact a moratorium on mineral extraction pits. Thank you for your time, St. Germain."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll open up the public comment. Anyone that has a comment, come up to the podium, make sure you address the board.
Dennis Long. I, I wish I'd known it was a three-minute thing here because it usually takes me all the time, but it's, it's time. Dicky? Is there any licensed pitch right now off of Mann Road?
Chief.
Yep.
There is.
I believe we were gonna, yeah, we're gonna have, I guess, Chris, do you want to read, we're not doing the question and answer thing right now.
We'll answer questions at the end.
Okay, let me do this. As Chairman of War and Finance Committee, there's going to be questions that the War and Finance Committee is going to be asking, uh, at our meeting, uh, when it's scheduled, hopefully next week. So we can wait, I can wait and ask these questions at our meeting to get answers, uh, however you guys want to do it, it doesn't matter to me.
We're not saying that we won't answer questions. If you ask a series of questions, we're gonna write them down, and then after everyone's had their chance to speak, then we're gonna go through, as time allows, and answer questions. It's just not gonna be a back and forth then. So if you have questions, by all means, ask them, and we will try to answer them later on.
What has been the increased expanse for the roads due to the gravel pits? What are the noise levels? Uh, noise pollution, uh, what's the decibels on that exceeding, uh, a good name of policy The, uh, the pollution, what tests has been done on the, in the lakes, for example, uh, that, uh, creates this pollution that we're trying to mitigate? In the, uh, the other thing is, what is the downfall, for lack of better words? It says in here that, that the ordinances are clear on these gravel, gravel permits, conditional use permits. What exactly are you talking about that's not clear? I mean, I, I worked on these myself for quite a while, with a lot of other people, and I'm not sure what isn't clear in the ordinance.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Waterman. The world relies on gravel pits. We cannot live without the sand or gravel and aggregate for all the cement products and roads in this country. I think we're fortunate that we have the amount of natural resources in this town. There are a lot of people that directly or indirectly get their livelihood from gravel and sand this town has. Having said that, I don't see why there is a need for a moratorium on gravel pits in Acton. Gravel pits are a necessity, and they are here to stay. With the town feels there is an issue with gravel pits and how they are run and managed, I think a better solution to the problem is getting all the pit owners together with the planning board, selectmen, voting boards, and officers, and discuss what needs to change, if any. The pit owners know all the DEP and EPA rules, regulations, and everything anybody. If there needs to be changes made, do it firsthand with the people that will be affected. This will save time and effort for everybody. The other issue I have is the timing of the moratorium. It seems to single out one company, Peppin Concrete, because they've put in an application for little gravel pits. First of all, Peppin Concrete is a small, family-run business that employs a lot of people from Acton. The Peppins also have a big history with the Town of Acton. They formerly owned the gravel pit on the H Road. They were stewards of the land. Working with Three Rivers, they protected bits upon a sizable portion of the acreage on the basel that will be open to the public and enjoyed forever. The Peppins' plan going forward will be consistent with their previous gravel pit ownership in Acton. The plan to give Three, they planned to give Three Rivers 65 acres with the hope that a trail system will be established that will run from Hanson Pond all the way to the top of Go Hill. Furthermore, as the land is reclaimed from the gravel pit going forward, they plan on giving the reclaimed land to Three, to Three Rivers or the town as well. Not to mention the snowmobile trails, hiking trails that they plan to establish, what an opportunity for Town of Acton. Another point to mention is the proposed 80-acre gravel pit is in the middle of 500 acres, so it will not be seen or heard from anybody grabbing down the H Road. If the Peppins have to stay in business, they must get a return on their, their investment. You would not want to buy a car, be told you could not drive it for a year because the town wanted to see if, if you passed muster. Ultimately, I don't think Town can ban future gravel pits, so the moratorium is not the answer. The answer is to get the Peppin application process started. If there are changes that need to be made for all gravel pit owners in Acton, then deal with that separately. I would hate to see an unneeded moratorium force the Peppins to look.
Time.
What's that?
Your, your time limit.
One more. Force the Peppins to look at another alternative that they have, subdividing land and making house lots. The best plan is to forego the moratorium, get the Peppin application started, reap the benefits the Peppins are willing to give the people back.
Thank you. My name is John Ballenough. I'm the Director of the Acton Wakefield Watersheds Alliance. I'm just quick, I'm just here to briefly give a watershed sort of water quality perspective as you guys are considering this. So just quick, you know, backstory, our organization, we're a local nonprofit dedicated to sort of just assisting, educating residents and decision-makers like you guys on, you know, how to best protect water resources in Acton and also in Wakefield, New Hampshire. Can you guys hear me? Okay. So just a little bit of quick explanation, you know, I'm not here to specifically speak for or against the moratorium, I just want to give the water quality perspective for you to consider. Um, when we're talking about watersheds, I'm referring to the land area around a water body that all the water that hits the ground flows into. So for example, the Great East Lake watershed is approximately 10 acres around the lake where water, any water that hits the ground or any of the rivers and streams are ultimately flowing into that water body. So any pollution at all that happens within the watershed ultimately makes its way down towards the water body. So when we're talking about protecting water quality, we do need to consider the larger watershed and what goes on within the watershed. Pollution, erosion, storm, can be picked up by stormwater, can be picked up in surface waters, lakes, rivers, and streams. Uh, can also be, it can also travel through groundwater in certain circumstances. Um, in certain land use types and landscapes are better or worse at capturing and storing pollution, storing, polluted stormwater. Simplest example of this is, so in like forested landscapes, polluted stormwater slows down and is broken up by sort of the natural landscape. It infiltrates into the ground and vegetation, uptake nutrients and pollution. Uh, so forested areas are in general better at preventing pollution from getting down to water, whereas sort of paved areas and condensed gra, condensed, um, soil with no vegetation, things like that. Um, it makes it easier for pollution and erosion to ultimately get down into streams and insulates. So that's sort of a brief explanation of what it means in terms of the larger watershed. That's obviously not to say that there's no place for development. So for example, our organization, we help homeowners, uh, landscape on their property to prevent stormwater from getting off of their property, so there are ways that you can develop properly and manage the land properly. Uh, likewise, when it comes to forestry and, and clearing, um, there's ways to do it that are better and worse for water quality purposes. So clear cutting obviously has the greatest negative impact, um, on water quality just because you're stripping the vegetation entirely and allowing stormwater to pass through more easily. Um, but things like selective harvesting, we're nearly cutting certain types of species or certain patches of a forest. Um, and even better, you know, developing like a long-term forest management plan that incorporates the health of the forest with timber harvest, um, there's more and less responsible ways that you can manage the land. Okay, so just in, in summary, you know, as that pertains to the, to gravel pits, there's concerns around these practices affecting groundwater or affecting surface waters and streams nearby, so in deciding this, just need to consider how it affects adjacent streams and the proximity to, to water bodies and also the vegetation around it that can insulate it from pollution. Thank you.
Today at property owners, uh, kind of with the deal. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the planning board for putting this out there. I really want to thank you for understanding that we need to push the pause button on new permits around town. We all understand that there may be adverse impacts on the roads, environment, and quality of life for residents, all of which will impact the tax base in Acton. One of my big concerns is that once excavation begins, it cannot be undone. Uh, remediation of a site will be required as part of this, you know, whole process, but there's collateral environmental damage may be irreparable, and, uh, having a consistent framework within which permit applications can be evaluated can only help all of the stakeholders, residents and owners of the excavation businesses. I imagine it will also reduce Acton's exposure to legal actions resulting from inconsistent permit conditions enforcement. Furthermore, it will make the job of the law, of the code enforcement officer much easier. As part of the process of evaluating the ordinances going forward during this time of moratorium, there are a few things that I hope you will consider, uh, as you have these discussions. Number one, listening sessions in which residents and pit owners can all be heard so that we can get all of the viewpoints across. Uh, a periodic review of ordinances as new data about environmental impacts of clear cutting and excavation becomes available. We're learning new things all of the time about what these, uh, long-term impacts are. Also, to consider a limitation on the duration of permits whereby they need to be renewed after inspection of the operations for violations, and further requirement that all violations be remedied before permits could be renewed. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Johnson. Actually, my letter was already read tonight, so I will not take up your time. I just wanted to say, um, I, I'm here with my aunt and believe our property owners off Great East Lake. My uncle is a carpenter. Um, sorry, we didn't know about this, but he has to say, measure twice and cut once. And that's how I look at this. You know, it's a, it's a pause to make sure we're taking the appropriate time before we do the call, because once it's done, it can be undone.
Dave Lambert, President here in town. Just reread some of the letters that were, there was a few of them that had to do with the pit that went on the Mann Road. When, uh, before they started mining in there, did the planning board or anybody reach out to the landowners? It seems like we locked the pond door open, and the animals are out, and now we're gonna try shut the door to take care of us. Uh, if you, if people come in and want to reacquire these pets, we should have this public hearing long before with them, with landowners, and let them know there should be a plan and what they plan on mining out, what your reclaim plan is, which is the state law anyways, but that's my question is, you know, you guys reached out before we got to this point. It probably would have saved a lot of lives and a lot of time.
Any other comments or?
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Allison Davis. I have a residence on Moose Pond Road. And also, I'd like to thank the board for having this meeting today and for boldly proposing this moratorium, which I wholeheartedly am for. And so, just as a prop, although you have it up there, I just wanted to point out that the residents of Moose Pond, there are only nine houses on that pond, and yet there are three active pits within a square mile of our residences. I don't know if you can see that or not. And these have all come up in the last two years. And so, in talking about everything that you have laid out in this moratorium with your concerns about health and well-being of the residents, about usability of the camp roads and all the roads around us, and the huge trucks coming in and out constantly, and the potential of problems with the local water and pollution. And so, these are all very near and dear to my heart because of everything that we've been seeing and dealing with for the last, really, year, but it's been a little bit more than that, even more so now with the recent expansion of Man World kind of out of nowhere.
Excuse me, one second.
And so--
Can you hear her, please? Thank you.
And so, whether or not there is a moratorium to sit down, to put things aside while discussing what needs to be updated in the town ordinance-- I think the town ordinance needs to be updated anyway. It seems from your conversation in the last meeting that that is something that you understand needs to get done. And so, with that in mind, I would really ask that you would consider for the city of Acton to limit the number and ordacity and or acreage of pits in Acton. And also that all permits, if Acton's new ordinance goes through, get re-reviewed and that there's some time increment of which review comes up every couple of years so that as situations change, those will get amended. I would also advocate that there's some mechanism to shut down pits following violations until those violations are then resolved. And on top of that, if there are pits that have multiple violations, it would be great if we also had a mechanism to actually revoke them from it. So this, of course, would require additional resources probably for the CEO for a lot more looking after these pits. So hopefully that would be considered. That is it. Thank you very much.
Hello, board. Everybody here, my name is Isaac Peppin. I'm against the moratorium. I understand that there's a lot of misunderstanding with everything going on with gravel pits, and I think that there's no reason that the board, the landowners, pit owners, local companies and local people of Acton can't sit down and figure out their differences. I grew up on Square Pond. My parents live on Square Pond. I have a piece of land in Acton that I'm building my forever home on shortly, probably this year. And the reason I bring this up is because we're not some big, rich, out-of-state company coming in here just trying to break the land of a sandy gravel and leave it destroyed for everyone else around. We know all the regulations we have to follow, all the setbacks, all the safety rules, how far we can dig, how high we have to be above the groundwater level to keep it safe, to keep enough filtration. We know all the proper rules to make things stay environmentally friendly. As I said, we've been on Square Pond for 20 years now. We're very aware of what things can happen to the water. We try our best, follow all the legal rules that are set in place by the DEP and everyone else. As someone had mentioned earlier, this moratorium goes through and it ends up setting us back and us not being able to open our gravel pit. We have over 500 acres in Acton that we're invested in, and that can turn into homes very quickly. I grew up in Acton fishing, hunting, riding dirt bikes, snowmobiles, you name it. Our gravel pit off the Eighth Road by Hanson Pond, a huge portion of that was donated to Three Rivers Land Trust by us. All that land is protected now. It's open to the public, get out, hike, hunt. We kept the snowmobile trails open. With this piece of land that we acquired in the Eighth Road now, we have a very, very similar plan. We are only going to be digging an 80 of upwards of 500 acres. There would be a huge portion donated and preserved and protected. If this moratorium were to go through and we weren't able to get this bid in, we can't guarantee anything that would happen on that land. I mean, the land could be divided and subdivided. Houses are significantly worse for the water quality than the gravel pits. Aseptic system is going in, significantly worse for any water treatment, anything like that in those gravel pit. The rest of the land could get stuffed up and sold, the developments built, the houses built. The land could get tiredly hosted and kept away from the public versus what we want. We want our case to be able to grow up, have all that land, have walking trails, snowmobiling trails, have a protected land to be able to hunt and fish. So as Acton residents, we're very aware of the issues and problems that people are concerned about, and we're not here to protect the town negatively. We want to be able to make our living and also try to preserve our town. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Matt Peppin, and I'm Isaac's brother. We represent the fourth generation of our Peppin sons. We're a small concrete company in Sanford, Maine. Our history here in Acton is over 75 years. My grandfather, we're looking at a photo today, was here for the planning board in 1975 getting gravel pit approved on West Shore Drive. He later reclaimed that gravel pit and planted beautiful, beautiful rows of pine trees throughout that whole location that are growing today. And we have a long history here in Acton. We also own this other gravel pit that my brother Isaac was just talking about on the Eighth Road. And we work with Three Rivers Land Trust closely with Carl Davis, believer in that, to make that a success, to donate that land for the entire town of Acton. And we're here again, me and my brother. We need this gravel to keep our company going. It's important for our business, and we employ a lot of Acton residents. Some of our employees are here tonight. And this gravel pit, it's important for our business. So a moratorium is a pretty serious word when it comes to that because we have a lot of money invested into this property, and we don't know what the outcome of the moratorium could be. It really scares us. There could be big changes that happen as a result of the moratorium, but they say we can't even use the Eighth Road to get the material for our company. That would be enough for us to go out of business one day if we couldn't get that material. So the word moratorium is traditionally something that town uses when there's a new development that comes in, when there's a new type of business that has never been around and the town doesn't have anything in the ordinance to know how to handle that. That's when you can act a moratorium. The gravel pits have been here for over 75 years in Acton, and there are clear rules in the ordinance, and there's ways that the town can possibly do a better job enforcing those rules right now without calling together a moratorium, which could really lead to serious consequences, not only for people who are applying, but people who have companies that are invested in these locations and are relying on them. To change their permits now could be extremely detrimental to those businesses. So I ask that you consider the gravity of the decisions that you're making here with this moratorium process. And as a gravel pit group, I've talked to all these guys up here, these other gravel pit owners, and we want to sit down with you guys. We want to talk to you and see what we can do to help. We feel a little bit bombarded by all this, like we weren't really given an opportunity to try to address some of these concerns, and we are more than willing to do that. We think as a group that you guys need to consider too what things you can do to enforce the rules. If there are bad operators out there, those people need to be shut down. And you guys have the power to do that to a large rate. I'm hearing a lot of the concerns from the Great East community here tonight, and I do understand those concerns. But it's not, you know, thus we live here every single day. These are our businesses, people relying on these jobs, and you need to take that very seriously as a group. We really do want to donate over 65 acres to Three Rivers Land Trust. We want to help them get a trail network that goes from Goat Hill all the way to Hanson Pond. That would be unprecedented, miles of trails that connect this community. It would be a great thing for the town of Acton. We want to work with the Melson Valley Snowmobile Association and guarantee that they have snowmobile access throughout our property for life so that snowmobiles can snowball all the way around Square Pond. And that's a big tourist thing for the state of Maine and for the town of Acton, the snowmobiles that are here. And we want to protect those things. Putting a moratorium together, we don't know what the results could be. It's scary for a business, and you guys really need to think about how serious that is for this community. And I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nathan Baker of the 13th Street. I grew up in Melson Lake and love fishing. Water is in the entire watershed, the Melson Lake, the Black River watershed. I do think we need to look into how it affects not just the pit, but the area around it. Everything that goes from Square Pond and Harpeters Cove all the way through Melson, flows all the way down, Melson River all the way down, that concrete plant. So it affects a lot more than just this town. And I think it's nice that they're offering to do all these good projects for the town. I find it unfortunate that you almost seem to be threatening and hanging it over the head, like you won't decide what to do these things before, whether or not you have a moratorium. Because I don't see that affecting your bottom line that much. I do know that you've got over $400,000 in PBT loans that you keep them afloat. And I know the world does not revolve around concrete as much as it revolves around water. Have you ever tried making concrete out of water?
Adjust the chair, please.
To me.
Okay. You know, and-- but you are absolutely right, though they do know all the rules. The Peppins do know all the rules and regulations, and despite that, they still disregard them. They have a history of showing total disregard for that. They overdate their pits by yards. Even just today, the guy cutting my neighbor's tree down, I talked to him. He happens to own land on the Eighth Road, abutting the Peppin pit there, and he said that originally, he told him there'd be no dust or anything. All of a sudden, he got a rock crusher running and a dust all over, and he told him there'd be three trucks and that would turn to 15. And I see a lot of permits, not even just in general, where I've seen town meetings where-- they'll get the permit and then they'll ask for an extension to change like five trucks into 15, and they'll get the extension granted. And that just seems against the spirit of all of this. And anyways, I'm in strong support of the moratorium. I think it should be prolonged. I mean, three months is pretty much just in the winter. Anyways, I think it should be seriously looked into, and I hope you work with environmental agencies, other than this-- that one that wrote the letter in, maybe a nonprofit or something. Because a lot of the people here in support of this are either a Peppin or paid by a Peppin. And I think you need to take note of the people that are here against it because I'm not here to make any money out of this. Now, I just hear the concerns of the environment and the taxpayers of Acton. Anyway, watch it, Eric. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Dave Land, the board in the Slutman's office. Do you have the original paperwork from back in the '70s and '80s? Lady that was up earlier before the Peppin brothers. Those pits, those three pits that she was talking about were inactive for quite a few years, but they were mined back in the '70s. And a lot of these out there, there were some new ones that would be coming out, and they would fall under these new laws, regulations. But do you people have the original paperwork, dates, and everything to educate the public and let them know that they were there at one time? And those were for a few years, what they need to do. So that's my question. Do you have the original paperwork for when these pits were established in town except for-- there's got to be some paperwork on this. That's my question, to be able to educate the public.
Hi, this is Jean Albiere on Moose Pond Road. We're on the park. Yes, as a matter of fact, you do have the paperwork for the one on Mann Road. It's dated 1989. It has certain restrictions on it already. Some of those restrictions have been violated. I also have just moved here this year. I thought this was going to be my forever home, and I find myself surrounded by sand pits. The new one, the old Peppin pit, is now 250 feet off my property. I hear the trucks, every single one, before I go to work. I see their trucks passing me on the Eighth Road. I see their trucks passing me when I come home at night, and I continue to hear it pounding. I hear it from the McCoy pit on the other side of the pond and of this one. I thought this was going to be my forever home, and I'm not sure. I want to stay here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom McHardy. I live at 542 West Shore Drive. Now, I'm trying to understand what's at stake here. It seems the moratorium is really not going to affect any existing pits, if I understand it correctly. And what I'm hearing a lot about is concern about violations that are existing with its half. So I'm not quite sure how to connect those. The moratorium really isn't going to do anything about existing pits. And if there are concerns about violations or the permits not being followed, it seems to me that town already has the ability to go ahead and deal with these matters. I think what the moratorium will do is prevent any new permits from being filed. So, and to my understanding, there's one permit that's been filed. Perhaps there are others, but it has to do with the Peppins. So all of these concerns that we have, they principally seem to be with enforcement, enforcement of existing regulations. And so I just wanted to point that out. I think those two things are being confused here.
Yeah, I'd like to respond also to you from that. I think we're hearing a lot of individual problems with enforcement. My understanding of the moratorium is that it's pause on granting new permits or additional extension or of conditional use permits until we can get a handle on where this is all going and what it will mean, what the explosive growth of mines in this town will do to the town. Right now, there's a few mines. There's one that they're growing. We're getting more mines, we're getting more permit applications, and until we can figure out how to grow that sensibly, by talking to residents, by talking to the pit owners and the operators, we need to all come together and figure this out. That's what my understanding of the moratorium, not saying you can't mine here, is saying we need to put pause on any new activity until we can really take a look and see whether the ordinances that have been on the books for so many years are going to serve us going forward. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bob McDonald. Just want to stand up briefly and say that the gentleman just previously spoke in regards to the fact that the concerns of the people that are in favor of the moratorium don't seem to align with the function of one. A lot of the concerns from the letters previously read are water quality, runoff, tree cutting, some other comments in regards to mechanisms of control for the size, violations, extractions. All of these mechanisms are already in place in regards to MSHA, Control of Safety of the Miners, and all of the effects of the gravel pits on noise. the miners, and all of the effects of the gravel pits on noise, dust, the DEP heavily involved in all the restrictions on, you know, observations in the field of the pits as their operational, and then again, code enforcement in regards to the ordinances. I guess in conclusion, you know, I'm not in favor of the moratorium. Seems like both of the activity that's fueling this is the application of a new permit and the disturbance in a pit coming back to life over on Mann Road, which people are just not aware of, and it seems that this has turned into this as a result of people just not being educated on what's around them, and I feel that they think that a moratorium is going to buy them time to educate themselves, and that duration of time just going to affect the applicant that's trying to keep his business going. Thank you very much.
I just have one question for the town. What is the, what's the timeframe that the moratorium would be voted on? When do you anticipate that there would be a vote? Based on that, it seems to me that if there's an application that has been presented to the town, it should be dealt with, and I don't know how you can just set that aside and wait for a moratorium. I mean, you can't have it kind of both ways here, and that seems to be, I don't know, something that just doesn't raise the well-being.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Hattie. I have a question also. Mr. Peppin told us a really good story, and it sounds very well, good, that there'd be roads and hiking trails. We all like to do that in turn, turn what is a pit into a playground almost. I just wanted to know if there's a guarantee, is he going to do that? He said they have done that before. Is it going to be done with this one? I just, that's a question.
Um, Dave Peppin, about 500 acres of town here. To answer your question, and the gentleman said wrong to you, long before this, long before this whole thing started, we were already in the process of, we worked for, we were in the same process, we worked for two years with a whole different plan of work that we promised that we were going to get that land, but there's nothing we can do with the trail as now. Long before this whole thing started, we were working for Kyle Davis Three Rivers, that once we got the land, we already worked, we already made the trail. We are guaranteeing it, to answer your question, it will be in writing, it will not own the land that day. The other thing that my son brought up is that there's a snowmobile trail that goes down that land. When I was nine or 10 years old, leaving Springvale, I remember taking that trail with my family to go to a poor people's pub. It's an important thing with anybody that comes to the park. I welcome anybody in here, come on, man, we got.
Sir, address the board.
With our four wheeler, that I did, some people aren't happy, can see what we're donating. Yes, it is on record, it is all going to be submitted, I will not own that any better. Not only that, talk to some of the people, we've decided, because my dad did the first pit on the road there, West Shore, he planted awful trees there. It got torn down when there was one house brought in, it kind of bummed me out, so I realized, when we're done with 8 acres of gravel, I don't want to go houses there. When we replant trees, I want to be there for the community forever. The town of Acton has a great opportunity here to connect trails from up there all the way to the other end. I hope they don't blow it. I understand a lot of the opinions that people say in here, and I think we don't need the moratorium. What we need is to sit down and address these concerns, work together. People that break the laws should be stopped, and it's up to you guys and him to learn that. If you're not going to follow the laws, you shouldn't do it. The DEP is strict on us. If anybody, anybody can call them, and they will show up, and if there's a problem, stop it. If any pit is running into a river or a brook, the DEP will shut them down immediately. You can't do this crap. It's against the law, period. People have to understand that if you're breaking the laws of the state of Maine, never mind the towns, you're done. People of gravel pits can't do that. It's very, very strict rules. The other thing I want to say, you've got gravel pits, like, where I want to put 80 acres, it's the best thing, in my opinion, other than just giving away. If I don't do gravel pit there, doesn't matter, my property comes down, it's not that big deal, I don't care about that, it'll be houses there. What is better on 500 acres is preserve the land, preserve a lot of that, have a small bit of gravel pit.
Don't worry about it.
Or have a housing. We've already, we've already had people call us that want to put all different kinds of houses in there. It's not the right thing for this piece of property. And to answer your question one more time, it is in writing, I will not own that property when this goes through.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Travis Bragg. I live on Fox's Road Road. I've been in the mining industry for 10 years at this point, and it seems like the town at this point, the letters, the concerns, there's a lot of misunderstanding. Everything between the gravel pit is regulated by MSHA, by DEP. If you screw up, they shut you down. All the concerns seem like seasonal homes and a lot of just misunderstanding. People don't understand the process, they don't understand how this is run. As an Acton resident, I work for the Peppins, that's my livelihood. As someone who deals with our aggregate on a daily basis, I can tell you if this doesn't go through, in two years, I'm probably going to have to have another job, because they probably will have to shut them down. 80 out of 500, it's a dropping bucket. I've worked for other companies, and I can tell you they're going to do it the right way, because I have to, because it has to be regulated. You guys need to work with gravel pit owners, and you probably have to reach out and partner minds and really get a better understanding of this, and get away from the muck's one, because this isn't working. You guys are headed down a bad path, that's bad for the town, bad for local businesses. This isn't just for Peppins, but it seems that everybody makes that decision. There's been plenty of other permits approved, you guys haven't stopped reconsidering anything. Why not? One gravel pit in the middle of 500 acres, now it's a problem. Where were the issues when you were approving other permits? Did you just slot a signature on and let it go? No town meetings, anything? I'm looking at it as a resident, I don't want to change career paths, because you guys decided that, you know, taxpayers who don't live here, who don't understand the industry, are pulling together a group to make something happen. That's pointed. I hope you guys really consider what the actual effect is on the community and the blue collar workers who live in this town, a lot of people moving here that don't have an understanding. Thank you.
My name is Mike Maglerio, mine operator.
Excuse me a minute. Sir, people were quiet when you were speaking, and if you'd please do the same. Thank you.
I oppose the moratorium. I do agree that we need to work on everybody's permits uses, everybody on the same page. I do believe that. We do need to do something about all the truck traffic. I live in the next town over, and we've had some problems with the trucks coming out of town going over there. But to have one mine operator, one pit, that's, with this moratorium is going to pull them up. I mean, it's not right, you know? I'm a little nervous talking to everybody, I'm sorry about that. You know, different boards have given all these guys their conditional use permits, and we do need to get it on track, everybody has the same thing. We are regulated by DEP, MSHA, we're doing something wrong, we're allowed so many trucks a day, this, that, and the other thing. You know, I try to be a good steward of the land, we do everything we've got to do with reclamation and checking our water and everything like that. These guys do the same thing, they check everything they're doing. They do a good job. So, so having a moratorium on one application for 180 days for one pit isn't really doing anything. You have all these mine operators here, they're all willing to work with you, all of us are, you know? So let's think of that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, three seconds here before we start to leave. One thing I'd like to say, I've already tried this a little bit, anybody on the plan board, in fact, I would like everybody on the plan board, please get a mind 4x4 and go look at our property. All the people back here, I agree with a lot of things that the people are saying, I really do. I invite any of you.
Sir, address the board, please.
Come look at the land that we have and what we want to do, not just for ourselves, but for the town, in writing for it. It is a good thing for this town, what we do. It's way better than Plan B housing. It is very, very good, and everybody can win. Not every town in it can be that way. This is a win-win for the town, and it's a big win. I want it to be that way. I want it to be one that I surround with, like my dad did. Ian from Idris, kids back, we live up here. So please, the plan board members, take the time, call me, come look what we're doing. You're going to like it, and I say that to everybody back here. I agree, we've got to get it so the bad people, we stop it. People make mistakes, we can't have it. We've got the DEP, we need you guys to learn your jobs, because a lot of you are new. He's a good boy, he's young, he's going to learn too. We're here to help you guys, not to hurt, and I just wanted to say, please, I would like all of you to call me, anybody in here, I would like to come see what we are going to have in writing that we're going to be giving away, not after that. Thank you.
James Kipper, I live over on West Shore Drive in Acton. Couple of quick questions, simple. If this goes through and starts at 180 days, what's the process of extending it? Is it something that you guys can just bump through and nobody else has a say on it? Or is it, does that have to go back to vote? How many times can you extend it? Secondly, the process of how you guys are doing this, did you guys consult with the town lawyer to make sure that you're doing it legally, so as a taxpayer, you guys aren't wasting my money when you guys get sued for doing something wrong? Couple of quick questions that people probably want to know. Thanks.
From your office, I'm just wondering if the board here has looked at the main department of environmental protection, talking about pits, sure that you guys may have or may not have. There's a couple of instances or a couple of discussions that were talked about as far as buffer zone, how far the pit was away from some of the property. And specifically states on here, 50 feet property line above, above it put on the property. There's 75 feet for an extreme buffer. There's 100 feet for road. There's a big concern on what it's impacting the environment here in Maine. Do the pits have to submit anything to the EPA for groundwater contamination, all that type of situation? And has the board looked at the Court of Federal Regulation, that's 40, chapter 436, and it states specifically on there what needs to be done as far as mining and pit? I'm looking at the ordinance here, and it says the current zoning and land use ordinance lacks uniform standards. If you look at just this pamphlet alone, it tells you a lot of stuff from Maine of what needs to be done as far as pits go, and then you go into the federal regulations, I think, like Mr. McGurty said, I think it's a matter of enforcement. How do you enforce all these rules that are already in place that these people have to abide by? Those are my questions.
Anyone else?
I think one of the things that's happened is Peppin feels like he's been singled out on this. And some of the prior meetings that we've been to, that we also wanted to limit the expansion of some of the existing pits, to figure out how to do this responsibly. Some of the reasons that I see, living so close to one right now, is that none of the abutters knows what's going on before it happens. In the case of Mann Road, where it's now twice as wide than it's ever been, the clear cutting right down to the property line on Kilkey and Chamberlain, it's devastating, and these people don't live here in the west of town, they don't see it. So when they come in April and ready, and they see that their road is totally exposed, it must be heartbreaking. Why, you can't tell me that the property value only decreases about 18%. You can't, because there's constant noise. The other fact is that it's concentrated in such a small portion of Acton, and it's all along H Road, and the trucks travel up and down that road all day long, all day long. And one of the considerations in the 1989 George Mann permit indicated that the first truck had to leave by 6 o'clock, so that the buses never interfered with them, and the last truck needed to leave the pit by 3 o'clock, so that when the buses returned, there wouldn't be any large trucks on that road. Obviously, we all know that the road is not very straight, and it's not very level. So it's difficult to traverse that road with that much expansion in such a small area. So I don't want them to feel like any of them are being singled out, but we need to figure out the traffic, the dust, the noise adds up right now. I can see them, I can smell them, I can feel it, I can hear it, and it's, and it's non-stop. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lee Law, a tour resident of Acton, Maine, living on West Shore Drive. I always got to state it today that a for sale sign came up. It represented 170-plus acres of land that was a significant part of the watershed of Square Pond. I immediately called the broker and was told that the property was under agreement, that fast, 170-plus acres. I found out that Dave Peppin had purchased the land, and I was very concerned about what was going to happen with this property. And I reached out to David, and David assured me that he had the best interest of the town in mind when he acquired this. There were other buyers for the property, and they, they had interest in developing the land into subdivisions, and he grew up in this area, and he didn't want to see this happen to the property. And he said that he needed to develop sufficient amount of the property in order to recover his investment, and that he was going to do it in a very good way that would protect all of the interests. He mentioned conservation, he mentioned Three Rivers Land Trust. I took the time to reach out to them, I confirmed the fact that he had worked with them in the past, and that he was working with them on this acquisition. David then told me, if you want to see what I'm doing, come out and see the property. I took him up on it, I walked the property with him, and I think that the Peppin family has the best intentions in mind, and I really feel that there's a lot of pits in Acton, and I have concern about the blemishes on the landscaping and the impact to neighborhoods, but overall, I think the Peppins have done a tremendous job. I think the enforcement issues are critical going forward, that you need, the process of permitting is, is extensive, and the monitoring is extensive, and it's important that everybody, you know, adhere to the regulations and the permitting process and be maintained. And the reclamation process is also important, so that we're not left with permanent scars on the, on the property. And I believe there's bonds and financial requirements that are, that they have to put up in order to make sure that these, these pits have, are restored after the, after the extraction of minerals has taken place. So, they've reached out, they said, if there's issues that we have as, as an industry with the town, let's work on it and resolve it. And that makes a lot of sense to me, and I am very sensitive to traffic, I'm very sensitive to the noise. I live there, and I certainly appreciate it, but I think that the Peppins in this particular situation have the best interest of this town in heart. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of points that I'd like to make, also, back on the pit side. According to this, a working pit may not exceed 10 acres in any one time. Working pits include all areas of extraction, including the side slopes and graved areas, stockpiles, and permanent structures are excluded. Far as the reclamation, to keep your pit under 10 acres, progressive reclamation is required. It goes on to the grade of what it needs to be brought back to, and 90% should be covered with vegetation. So, like, once again, there are things already in place with the main department of environmental protection that have to be left out.
Good evening, Jason Roeder, one Square Pond off Stonewall Drive. I do agree, things like this moratorium was put in place for the Peppins after their application was put in. I have been put through, been through their property, they have the proper wells for the need, they're already in place. Does seem better than miring in that gravel pit with the benefit of the land versus subdivision. Within a square mile and a half, I live within three gravel pits today, and they don't seem to affect our day-to-day travels or whatnot, anymore than you hear gunfire from the pit on the Boney's pit, which is constant. There's always noise. Everything new is going to change everybody's opinion for whatever it might be, but they do have a track record of doing things right, and they have donated the land in the past. We utilize this more than trails year-round, and look forward to continuing. Thank you.
I would just like to raise attention to the, the numbers here. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and I, I don't know how many, but I think a lot of this room is either a Peppin or receives a paycheck from a Peppin or a Peppin Enterprise. Can I see a hand?
Sir.
Yeah.
Address the board.
We're not going to go there.
Yeah, we're not going to do banter or anything like that.
I don't know how much this can cost, I would like to reiterate that, public record, you can look it up, under three different addresses, they took out PPP loans, one for $265,000, for a hard Peppin, instead of a common.
That doesn't matter.
$45,000, not just four Peppins.
Hey, sir, sir.
$18,000.
Hey, sir, sir, it doesn't, it does not contain.
Some of them just have a track record of doing things totally appropriately, and I would just agree to have a track record of doing things totally intercooperatively. When I was employed for them in 2019.
All right, sir, we're going to end this one, we're going to end it.
They didn't even have safety data sheets.
You can leave. Thank you.
I'd like to suggest that.
We don't want to have any rebuttal.
At the point of a three-minute rule, the, the point of a three-minute rule was.
Once.
Once, otherwise, what's the point? And, and I know a number of people have spoken repeatedly, but that's just my opinion.
Can you repeat that, please, if you can hear me?
If, the point of having a three-minute limit on speech, speaking was to limit the length of the hearing so we could get to questions, if people are going to keep getting up, you know, it's, if you haven't spoken yet, great, by all means, but if you have, it would be great if we could either hear from new people or move on to answer, trying to answer questions, is my opinion. I'm not speaking on behalf of everyone, but.
I'm sorry, I feel like Dennis Longhand. So, if this goes on, and we don't have much to say, but, of the DEP, is the planning board thought about bringing somebody in from the state? I think there's, we all kind of agree, there's a lot of misinformation, people aren't sure what's going on, we need to educate the public. The town of Acton is not, is always starting, it's always been a little town, and now all of a sudden, the town of Acton is starting to grow. Our population's doubled, the people are coming out, living on these lakes year-round. Gravel is our industry, just like 60 years ago, it was the apple industry. And now, all of a sudden, you have to deal with this. And to deal with it, to educate the people, you need to have a slideshow. This is what our first term is going to be, this is what you have to do. And to the end, to where your plantings are going to be, you, you need to educate them, if you want to make this right. And that's, I think that we need to get somebody down from the state, and, you know, sit down, you guys have a meeting with them, and we can see what the, the best, best way to go. But we, we have to educate everybody on this.
Matt, I wasn't trying to stop you, I just didn't know if you were going to go back on what was being said a second ago, so if you needed to say something, go right ahead. I wasn't, I didn't know what you were, I didn't, you know, I just wasn't looking for.
Matt, I'm just going to talk about the engineering side of it, real quick. We have a lot of groundwater monitoring, which will be done by a registered geologist who's in the domain of engineering, and that plan requires us to check the water levels of four wells onsite in the 80 acres. Requires you to check the groundwater levels in spring, per year. The planning board could, if they want more regular testing, that's some of the conversation that we can have. We do have engineers who will have a plan to plan groundwater levels. And I just wanted to say one other thing, that the gravel pit would be bonded through both the town and through the state of Maine. So, if anything ever happened, there would be a performance bond in place to pay for any reclamation on site, and there would be two bonds in place, one through the state of Maine and one through the town. So, there are some very strict environmental regulations concerning, all I want to say.
Anyone else?
My name, my name's Marion Robitour, I'm a resident of Acton, and I just want to say that I think it might be a prudent for the town, the planning board to put a moratorium. I think all, some very emotional letters have been received, but they may not necessarily be based in fact, and I think we need to get the facts. And if they're willing to discuss it and get the other pit owners together, I think that would be a more prudent solution, not a moratorium.
All right, we'll close down the public hearing, or, thank you all for coming out tonight. Do you want to ask questions?
Some, that I guess, I might not be prepared for some of them, but I just want to make it clear that this moratorium, in no way, so, the moratorium conversation was brought up in the beginning of December, after some review of other pits and stuff like that, and concerns from other, other residents, and other emails that we had been, we had received throughout, you know, the duration of, you know, six months or whatever it was. We talked about it, and then it was, it was brought to my attention, you know, that this is what they wanted to do. We started talking, conversation with the, about the moratorium with the board of selectmen for approval, and then two days later, the application came in. So, there's no, we were not, the, the planning board nor the co, the land use department was not, you know, where, when they were permitted, were bringing their permit in, we were not trying to block just the Peppins. People are saying that we're, we're against, it has nothing to do with the Peppins individually, it has, you know, I want you to know that, we started this process before their application came in. The process started, then the, then the application was thrown on my desk, and now, so people are being misinformed and thinking that he had an application in there, and now we're putting the, the moratorium together. It's not it. Moratorium was, was talked about prior, application came in after. So, I just want to let you guys know that if you look at the planning board meeting of, I believe, two meetings ago, before we as a board started talking about the potential of having a moratorium, Mr. Quah asked, are there any applications in the pipeline? And I responded to him, we are not allowed to know that. We had no knowledge of what, about Mr. Peppin or anyone else having an application in process. It is just not true to suggest that this is directed at Mr. Peppin's business, or any business for that matter. And someone asked a question about the potential to misuse, like getting a moratorium to delay a particular application or applications. There is actually case law in Maine, the name of the case is Portland Sand and Gravel versus the Town of Gray, and it speaks directly to that issue. It is not legal to misuse the moratorium process to simply delay, like to hold the applications back so we can get the moratorium in, or anything like that. So, I too want to allay concerns and frankly rumors that that's what's going on, because it isn't. It may feel like that to some people, but that doesn't make it true, and it's not true.
How many new applications for gravel pits has the town received in the last four months? That it would think that a moratorium is necessary.
Well, no, there's no, this is.
Yeah, we've moved on, the question, we're trying to answer some questions now.
Questions. Jay, do you want to answer? Somebody can answer.
There's, yeah, I mean, there's some that maybe all of us can chime in on too.
So, there was a big thing, one of the big things is, you know, you guys have talked about and addressed, it was violations and things like that, and a lot of this goes back to, you know, before me, you know, and myself coming into here. You know, this, if you, if you want to drive down certain, you know, camp roads, you'll find unreclaimed sand pits. You know, yeah, they probably have a reclamation bond on them, but they're not reclaimed, and so to say that all pits have been reclaimed is, is, or code offices, you know, I don't know. So, I just don't, I want to make sure that people understand that these, a lot of these concerns wasn't just from my department, as violations and things like that, but, I don't know.
I also think one of the points that's really pertinent to that question of how many pits, how many applications and so forth, is the location of the pits. And we're hearing that from residents, that it's a really, it's a concentrated area, which leads to some of the concerns about the traffic on the roads with large equipment, the number of them, the damage to the roads, the adequacy of the roads. It might, you know, maybe if we were looking at a variety of applications from different areas in Acton, but personally, I think the, the proximity of them and the proximity to water bodies is a different issue. There's collective impact on the environment that maybe wouldn't exist if they weren't in the same area, using the same roads. If you already have, like, a conditional use permit that allows one pit to have 50 trucks on the road per day in this area of Acton, if you added those same conditions in terms of consistency to a pit located distant, really distant from that, that's very different than saying, we're going to let someone else have 50 trucks, and guess what? Those 100 trucks are going to be using the same roads. I see that as a different public safety concern. So, again, it's not directed towards any one person or entity, and we don't even have that application in front of us. And, you know, the concerns raised about enforcement issues, I agree with that. However, and I do agree that whether the moratorium goes through or not, which is not something the planning board puts in place, by the way, I think that's been stated a couple of times, we don't have the authority to do that. The voters of the town of Acton will decide whether or not a moratorium goes into place, not the planning board, not the select board. And yes, we need to work together, whichever way it goes. We've got to have the stakeholders at the table. Issues like enforcement, issues like road safety, are the roads going to be widened? Are they going to be marked and so forth? I don't see where the stakeholders coming to the table can resolve those issues, frankly. It comes down to votes and money to do that. So, whether that is, you know, impact fees from new startups, or, I, I don't know, we're going to have to all talk about that, but people coming together to talk about, we're going to try to follow the rules better, we're going to try to be better neighbors, yes, those are important issues, but there are some issues that I think extend well beyond that, that are going to require something more than the stakeholders coming together. I'm open to being persuaded otherwise, but I, I haven't been able to figure it out, road safety being the primary one for me. There were some questions about the duration of a moratorium and whether we can just keep continuing it, and it almost sounded like maybe a hide the ball type approach or delay, and, and again, that cannot be lawfully used for that purpose. The maximum time that a moratorium can be enacted is 180 days, and again, that will be by the voters at a special vote. If after that 180 days, we have taken reasonable steps towards resolving the issues that we cited as the basis for the moratorium, then the select board can vote to extend it for another six months to continue that work. But if we've done nothing to address those issues, I mean, that's one of the criteria they have to meet to vote to extend it, is that we've had to have been doing something towards it during that six months. So, I just want to address those concerns, and maybe I'll be quiet for a minute and let other people speak, or maybe longer than a minute.
There's a question James asked about contacting a lawyer and stuff and wasting, we have contacted lawyers, we've contacted several, actually, so, you know, it's in the parameter of what we've done already, we've done our research. I've called fishing. I've called Fish and Game to check on wildlife habitat, which, you know, there's, there's certain things that haven't done, you know, that we know about that are in that, in just that general area, so. I mean, we are making our phone calls for, for certain things too now, so, we are doing our research.
Ashley, are there more questions that maybe can be read and we can see if we're able to respond or...
Jason.
I like this.
Oh, I can, yeah. So I have a lot of, like, some questions, you know, Mr. Langley wants to know about some of the old stuff, that's our old, the older pit paperwork and permits. Good luck. We have some, but if you want to come down and see how these things were filed, good luck. Ashley's been working her tail off to, to find, go through and, and just find some of the, the conditions for these older pits or, or what's going on. The, just say the filing of the previous, however, year, how many years is just lack thereof. And so we are working, she is working really hard to, to organize all these pits and their conditions and, and so we can, so we can actually try to get everybody's conditions and operating and what their, their permit is, what they're permitted for. So that's one of our biggest issues and that what comes down to violations. We don't, I don't know what some of these pits are allowed to do, because I, everybody has different conditions. I have different start times, different truck loads, I have different amount of acreage that's allowed to be exposed or opened and revegetation planned, so our office, my office is, and Ashley is working really hard to, to try to get answers for, for some of these violations or, or conditions and all this other stuff, so that is, yeah. So that, to answer that question, we're trying to get all that stuff. You can come and help if you want. Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of it was some statements and then, I mean, I have Dennis, I have your questions, but I'll, I'll get you, I'll get those for you.
If I may.
Sure.
I guess to make it easier, Jason, the real question is, the reasons that were given for the moratorium is the data to back up those reasons.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll put a, I'll put a, I'll put a sheet together and we'll get you, the planning board as well as myself will work on getting some stuff for the warrant, warrant finance committee, so you're not just blindsided. And if you guys would like, we had to put your emails, we can, I can give you some of those answers that I give to the warrant and finance committee if you're interested. Does anybody else on the board have something that they'd like to address?
Anything you got?
I just want to say on the two-part issue, one of, someone used the word mudslinging, directed at, I assume, the planning board. And again, the misunderstandings about how this discussion about a moratorium even got originated. In both instances, tonight's the first night that Mr. Peppin's name has been used with us as a board and so forth, and it came from, from you all. So again, as I've already said, this was not initiated towards Mr. Peppin or any individual or pit. We did not know of any applications, and there was no mudslinging, because we didn't even have a target or a name to be flinging mud at. So the reason I say that is, you know, misinformation percolates, creates a lot of ill will sometimes, and it's unfortunate because it's ill-founded. So if nothing else, I would hope that people would take that away tonight. If you think there's been a conspiracy or a vendetta or preferential treatment, that's not the case. Thank you.
I know about that.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that.
And we did have two pit owners in here previously, one was Mike and, I forget your name, Curtis.
Yep.
They offered, you know, to work with us, and we didn't, we didn't say no to them, and we are willing to work with them, so. We're all people of our word and, you know, it comes down to, we are willing to work with the pit owners and, and the people, so.
And again, if you go back and look at, I think it would be our last planning board meeting, when we discussed whether we were going to have a forum like we've had tonight, because it's not required under the law, but several of us on the board, myself included, spoke about, we wanted to do that, because we represented to the pit owners who had been here previously, that we wanted to work together and do whatever we could. So we want to honor our word by doing that, and that's what we've done.
I also left my business, the cards up there, that has my email address, I know you can get it from the online. If you guys have any more questions or concerns or, or just want some more clarification, or just want to make a statement, feel free to reach out. I'll try to get back to you as soon as I can.
Anything else?
You know, if, if nothing else, whether we agree or disagree on a topic, it's wonderful that there are this many people that care about the town and use their time and came out tonight.
Could you just speak to what the next step is?
So the next step is if, if, if the board, the planning board decides to hold strong on their, their views of the moratorium, then I believe the Selectmen have, or, I don't know exactly who it was, but they, February 2nd or February 3rd would be a special town meeting, that would, there would initially, that would be the vote. You guys, the town residents would be voting to see if they wanted the moratorium, if they opposed it, or if they oppose it. So that's the timeframe that we're looking at right now, February 2nd or 3rd, is the next step, pretty much.
It has to go through the warrant and finance committee?
Yes.
And the select board before the warrant article can be put forth to the voters?
If I may.
Yes.
Did I miss something? Just because I'm a long time doing this stuff. At the Selectmen's meeting the other night, it was discussed that the planning board decides tonight to move forward with this. Then the town administrator would give me a phone call tomorrow and would set up a date for our warrant finance meeting to make recommendations on the warrant, because there's a 10-day posting, I think, or something like that. And they had said that they're looking at that February 3rd or February 5th, well, because the warrant finance committee was scheduled to meet on the 24th, and they asked if we'd be willing to move it up, so they would create the time restraints to have this in, what, three weeks, whatever. So it's whatever the board decides tonight, I guess, is what happens.
I think someone over there had that.
Seth?
When is your normal town meeting?
June.
So I'm not, not trying to point you fingers, but in my town, we kind of have a history of some stuff going on as a radar. Why don't you just do the vote at the regular town meeting? Why push it further?
So Dave Mitchell, Chair of the Select Board, the only reason we're talking about doing this special town meeting, because us as a board decided that if the, if the planning board came to us with a recommendation, they felt that this was something important enough to do, that we would put it forward. Us saying we agree with it, but at the same time, the three of us have, we also have to make a recommendation on this. Nothing shady going on, but we also have other things that are going on at special town meeting. It's not just the whether or not this goes still or not. We have our sheriff thing to deal with, so we clumped it together. We're not trying to rush, rush the process at all. We asked the finance committee to bump it up so that we can get the sheriff thing on there at the same time, so we don't hold that up. That's the only reason we have to do that. We're not trying to jam this through. We make our recommendations, but at the same time, we had explained to the Chair and the court enforcement officer that if this was the will of the board, that we would do so.
Thank you.
That's also on tape at a select board meeting, if you want to go back and look at it, that conversation occurred and...
So, so the planning board needs to vote to see if they, if this is what in their, in what they want to do.
Are we ending the town meeting? Town hearing? Are we ending the town hearing before we go?
Do you want to end the town hearing first?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're going to end the town hearing for now and then we're going to vote on and continue on some other things. Thank you for everybody coming out tonight and releasing the concerns.
And you're welcome to stay to watch if you want.